Call the meeting to order.
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Here.
Councilmember Hewer.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Lamson.
Here.
Mayor Powers.
Here. Now we'll have silent prayer and the flag salute. Councilmember Hewer, will you lead us with the salute?
Let's lead with the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Video statement, please. Donna?
This meeting of the Ball City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, September 8th at 9 o'clock and Saturday, September 9th at 9:00 a.m. The city council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any microwave branch.
Okay. Agenda approval additions and/or deletions. There were a couple. We're going to, before the first presentation, we're going to approve and present to Sunny the Chiaria Awareness Month Proclamation. And then we're going to move G6 up right before C1. Is this C1? FG? G1? Yeah. We're going to move G6 up before G1, and that's the Approval of Wastewater Cost of Service Study and Continuation of Capacity Fee Study Session. Is that okay with everyone? Okay. And moving right along, we're going to present, I hope I'm saying this right, Chiaria Awareness Month Proclamation. First, we need approval to do this from the council, so if I could have a...
Second.
Okay. Paige and then Mark. And Sunny, if you'd come up over here to the podium, I'll read it.
Do you want to vote?
Oh, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oops. I'm having a rough day, aren't I? I just got here.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Powers.
Aye. See, that's what happens when you move everything around.
Does Sunny want to come up and bring anybody else with you? Aye. Hi, kids. Okay, this is from the city council, and it's a proclamation by the City Council of the City of Galt, California, recognize September as Chiaria Awareness Month. Whereas Chiaria Malformation affects 1 in 1,000 people and is nearly as prevalent as multiple sclerosis, a serious neurological disorder affecting well over 300,000 people in the United States, and whereas Chiaria Malformations are defects in the cerebellum, the part of the brain that controls balance. This creates pressure on the cerebellum. I don't know why I can't see that word. Cerebellum. Cerebellum, thank you. Come up here and help me, will you? And brainstem, and may block the normal flow of cerebral spinal fluid to and from the brain. And whereas the cause of Chiaria Malformation is unknown, but scientists believe it is either a congenital condition caused by exposure to harmful substances during fetal development, or it can be a genetic condition, as it may appear in more than one family member. And whereas symptoms usually appear during adolescence or early adulthood, and can include severe head and neck pain, vertigo, muscle weakness, balance problems, blurred vision or double vision, difficulty swallowing, and sleep apnea, and whereas the National Institute of Neurological Disorders and Stroke of the National Institute of Health is conducting research to find alternative surgical options and identify the cause of the malformations to create improved treatment and preventative plans. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Galt, California, that the month of September 2017 be proclaimed as Chiaria Malformation Awareness Month in the City of Galt. And this is signed by myself and our other four council members. We'd like to present this to you.
Thank you.
Give it to your ma.
Thank you.
Okay. You want to say anything?
I didn't think I was going to have to do this today. Thank you very much. This means more than you know, and I really appreciate it. Tonight, if you are hungry afterwards and you're out by 9:00, please come to Roundtable and have some pizza, and on the 23rd, come out to the Walk-in and have some fun. You'll meet some amazing people, like that one right there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Now we're at the Community Emergency Response Team Presentation.
Do we have a PowerPoint? Hey, that's pretty good. Just want to look. Okay, stop playing with the toys. Good evening. My name's Craig Walton. I'm a sergeant with the Galt Police Department. I'm here to give a brief presentation about the CERT program and how it works and how it benefits the community. And the biggest reason is every couple of two years, three years, we come in, talk about what we've done, what we've updated, and how my program, well, our program, excuse me, affects the community as a whole and what benefits it has. And if you take a look around in the world today, especially when you start looking at the hurricanes that we're seeing right now, more and more of them, if people had the opportunity and the training to help each other and help themselves, imagine what the reduction, the life-saving, the reduction of benefit, the reduction of needs on the first responders would be. The benefits would be overwhelming if people just had some basic knowledge of what they're supposed to do when there's a disaster. The CERT program started with exactly that concept, and what the concept was is for us, the CERT program, the trainers, is to teach people to take care of themselves and train them, help their neighbors in the event of a crisis of any type, multi-faceted. It can be fire, it can be flood, it can be just about anything. Earthquakes in this region, although they're small, they're still here. And it would reduce the burden on the first responders in the first 72 hours. Now, looking around, especially all of you that are sitting at the big table, looking around here, when we first started talking about disaster preparedness, what did they tell us? You have to be able to take care of yourself for the first 24 hours. We all know that in the first 24 hours, if there's a flood in Galt, you probably won't get any help. We'll do the best we can, and we know for a fact that the resources will be overwhelmed. So the idea is to tell people that first 24 hours is great, but if you're not ready for the next 48 hours after that, you're behind the curve. So the CERT program stepped up and said, this is what we're going to do. We're going to teach you to take care of yourself, train you to take care of yourself and your neighbors, and be prepared. So that's what the whole program was predicated on. So what we do is we go out in the community, we start those types of programs, and they're set up predicated on the fact that we're going to teach you to take care of yourself. But what that morphed into is that we're out in the community also helping take care of you. CERT deploys to just about anywhere they need to go. They are not just a local program, although Elk Grove, Galt is obviously a local program. CERT is a FEMA program that is guided by FEMA's guidelines with certain criteria that we have to meet. And the criteria is to raise the level of training to a certain level, not only to take care of yourself and your neighbor, but beyond that, we go out and we do things as simple as the Level 2 class teaches us to run shelters. We run the shelters for the heating and cooling centers in the City of Galt, and the people who have completed that class are eligible to go work in Red Cross shelters. Fortunately, we have not had to experience anything other than heating and cooling centers in the City of Galt. We haven't had to put up shelters, but at least we have people, hundreds of people, that are trained to help us in the event that happens. So quick, brief summary, more of a history lesson of how we got started. 1985, Los Angeles takes a big hit on earthquakes. They've had several small ones, a couple of big ones, and they've also had, believe it or not, if you take a quick look at history, it says that they had their first tsunami and they didn't know exactly what to call it or how to rate it, because there was no rating for those. So they start taking a look at the disaster preparedness, and they said, we're just not, we're not prepared. We don't know what to do, the resources get overwhelmed. So late 1985, we have the Mexico City earthquake. And so in reviewing the Mexico City earthquake, what happens is, is we go down as the City of Los Angeles, not me personally, '85, I wasn't doing that sort of thing. So they go down to Mexico City and start reviewing how they responded to it, and they had hundreds and hundreds of first responders that were killed, because these people didn't know how to take care of themselves and take care of their neighbors, but they responded incorrectly. So the idea is to start taking a look at the big picture, and how are we going to make the groups themselves, the citizens, better prepared? So in 1986, the Los Angeles Police Department, or Fire Department, came up with a great idea, and I still think today it's a really great idea, and we do share in the same idea, is they went out to Neighborhood Watch meetings, and they said, we're going to teach you to take care of yourselves, basically the first level of a CERT class, and we're going to teach you, the Neighborhood Watch people, to take care of yourselves and your neighbors. And that's where CERT actually got it started. Start, excuse me. 1994, North Ridge earthquake. It was actually the first test for the CERT program as a whole. What happens is, we have the earthquake, they call these Neighborhood Watch groups, we're going to need some help. The CERT people came out, they took care of their neighborhoods, took care of their friends. Although the numbers are small in the overall arching picture, the results was great. The reviews were good, the program appeared to have a future. So we're going to fast forward. In between, FEMA got involved, and every time the federal government gets involved, it takes us a little longer to roll things out. Not bad mouth in the federal government, but there's a lot of hoops to jump through. So FEMA is going to roll this out through Citizen Corps to everybody that wants this program. We're going to teach you to teach the program. So there was about a four-year period, five-year period in there that it was, FEMA was trying to figure out how they were going to execute the program. So 2006, 2007, 2006 is when I actually got involved. That's when CERT was in Elk Grove, went through the training classes, learned how to teach the people to take care of themselves. 2007, the first CERT class, it was over in the front meeting room. We really had no idea. There's no charge for it, so we had no way of telling how many people were going to show up. It was in the training room over at Parks and Rec. I don't know, you know, with the binder walls? Well, we had 35 people in that class, and tables set up. I have to tell you, not only was it extremely warm, but it was extremely cramped. After that, the classes got bigger and bigger. We teach classes in Elk Grove and Galt, but that was our first big kickoff. So the way CERT program works, Level 3 program, which is a basic class, if you take a look at it, we're teaching you to take care of yourself and your neighbors for the first 72 hours. Basic fire safety. We teach medical, which is disaster medicine, much different than the first aid we have before. A lot of it has to do with trauma injuries. It also refreshes your memory. When I went to high school, first aid was required to graduate. It's not required any longer, but it sure gives you a good idea, reminds you what you forgot. And a lot of this does exactly that. It reminds us as adults what we forgot in a disaster, so we don't run around in circles screaming in circles and waving our hands. So we teach the basic fire safety, we teach light rescue, team organization, the disaster medical, and a lot of what we teach people is organizational skills when bad things happen. Where do you start, and what is the goal at the end? So once that first class is taught, and we have over 300 that have run through the basic...
More than, more than 500.
...that have run through, in Elk Grove and Galt, just our program, that we've run through the basic course, which is the Level 3. Level 2 is the sheltering class. It is to the Red Cross standard. I can tell you that the class is, although when I took it, it was three days, it's down to...
Four hours?
Four hours. To meet the minimum requirements. It's a long, painful class, because when I went through it, we had to go through all the forms, we had to actually fill them out. We actually had to set up a partial shelter to show that we could do that and manage it. What's good about the class is that is our, that is our baseline. Once you complete that class, you become deployable with CERT as a member, a functioning member, not just to take care of yourselves. But with that said, it also requires that you do live scan and a basic background check, and we take a look at it. We have requirements, not only FEMA, but all of the requirements. We look at it, the background check, to make sure that you don't have any crimes or anything that we can't use you for, and you become a deployable asset if that's what you want to do. After you complete that, we'll move forward to probably what you see most around town when you go to the fairs, the festivals, any place that you see these gold shirts line up and it says first aid, their first responder. The first responder class is nationally recognized course. It is basically the AMT1 class as we know it, without the hospital and the ambulance time, so we can control the FEMA standard. That says, we don't necessarily want EMTs, but we want these first responders that are trained to this level. These people are also required to recertify every two years. The program is intensive, it's expensive to run, but what we end up with is a group of people that can go out in the community and work as first responders at any event that we send them to. In the event of disaster, they're more than just a basic first aid responder. And a lot of them, I don't see them here tonight. We have a couple of MDs, we have a couple of RNs. One RN that just retired as the trauma charge nurse from Kaiser Hospital is one of our CERT members. We have a lot of talent in the CERT membership. They all have to go through this class if they want to practice anything medical out in the field, because that's what CERT requires. FEMA requires that. On completion, like I said, of the Level 2 class, we send them out, and they have to get their live scan, and that makes them a deployable asset. What's good about that is, two years ago, we sent a group of people up to the Butte Fire, and they went up for something that people don't think of CERT about at all, and that's animal rescue. They train and train for animal rescue. We have a required animal rescue class to get certified. Makes them a deployable asset. It makes them a resource that there are not a whole lot of. Animal rescue's become a big thing in the City of Galt, even with our emergency operation plan. These people are trained to do it, they're certified to a level that the national level understands, recognizes. So some of the things that go on in the City of Galt is, not only do we teach the Level 3 class, we don't teach a Level 2 class down here that's at CSD, because the classes are so big that we don't have enough room down here unless we take over the Littleton Center or something like that. So we use the Consumers Training Center, which is also where all the equipment is. The Level 1 class, we teach up there, which is basically the EMT class we teach up there. But what I do teach down here is the basic course, the Level 3. We teach missing persons classes, rural and urban search classes. We do a lot of ongoing medical classes to keep them up to date. Traffic control is taught down here, and some of the animal rescue classes, although they're stuffed animals, and we don't like to stick real animals out in the bushes, we do use stuffed animals for those animal lovers. Every year, annually, this is what I teach down here, or we teach down here, is Level 3 class, two of them. We average on, every year, about 42 students down here, so it's a pretty good turnout. Traffic control class, we only teach down here. So we end up with our CERT, Elk Grove, Galt, City of Sacramento CERT team, Wolsom CERT team, the only place that this traffic control class is down here, it's taught down here. So we have pretty good-sized classes. I teach one missing persons class, which is completely different than search and rescue. It teaches you the logistics of not only to go look for them, but the legalities of looking for people and going on property and that sort of thing, which is completely different than when you have a disaster and you have a bigger spectrum of rights that you can, you can go through. And the ongoing medical is a huge class. We don't have enough of it. It's expensive to run. Even to run an eight-hour program, an update class, costs us quite a bit of money because of medical supplies and books and everything else. And I did skip the, one year, once a year, we teach the urban search and rescue classes. Many of the people here still have scars from going out and crawling through the stickers and bushes. Yes, I realize it's very small print, and the object was is to let you know, these are a lot of the events that we, that are annual events that we respond to and provide medical for the community at no charge. And just to rule out our ambulance, our medical units, and our trailers and everything else, it costs us quite a bit of money to do that. This is just a partial list of what the actual annual events are. In addition to just the medical support for the community, in the last couple of months, we've deployed CERT members for, I believe, three missing persons. I'll find it on there. Yes, three missing persons, one of which was in the City of Galt, and we got to cancel them right before they got here, because one of our detectives actually found the missing person. The ones in Elk Grove didn't go quite as fast, we had people out all night long. We've run the cooling centers, we've been fire watch for the Haybale Fire out here. They have a lot of talents, and we have a lot of good people. The ongoing training is monthly, and we try to keep it up to date. CERT program in Galt's been here for over 10 years. In 2014, we lost all of our money, and CSD has been supporting us since. We're always looking for funding in any ways that we can get it, and we're looking for support from the city, as every couple of years, we come back and try and find money, as Mayor Powers has graciously given us in the past. The reason we're here is to not only look for support, but to explain to people what we actually do, because they see us show up, and we do have, most of the council members have come out and said, this is a great program. So we're looking for support from the city, and that's what we're here for. Any questions I can answer? Comments? Kurt, good to see you. And the fire chief came tonight.
Right.
Which I was really happy to see.
I want to give you a little food for thought.
Yes, ma'am.
When you do go out and you help these people, and these, for these groups and these organizations, wouldn't hurt to say, we'd appreciate a donation.
I agree.
You need to learn to say that. I mean, because, you know, it costs, at the least, for gas and for everybody to get out there, you know, and I think a lot of people aren't, I don't think everybody should think it's for free. That's just my opinion. But I think that you should let people know that you gladly accept a donation for going out and helping them with their event, because you have to be out there. Somebody like you has to be out there.
I agree.
Okay.
I've never gone and looked for donations. I've always looked for government support, and as you can tell, I'm not shy to ask for anything. Not shy to talk about anything either. So I appreciate your time. Anything else?
I think the program highlights with the recent events, this kind of training is so crucial for this city, every city, to have a group of trained individuals that can support themselves for at least 72 hours. We've seen that again in Texas, we may see that in Florida again, so we do need the support of the cities that these programs operate in, so please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It was a great presentation. Thank you. Could you read public comment, Donna, please?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address city council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council, and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers, and forward the completed speaker sheet to the clerk.
Thank you very much. And we've got Judy Knott. Judy?
Good evening. I wanted to extend an invitation to the council members in the audience, and every member of your family and your friends, and everyone in the whole city of Galt, to come out and support your local artists. There's a SAC Open Studios Tour that, there are seven of us in the Galt area that are participating in it. I have catalogs and cards there. There are seven locations within easy driving distance in the Galt area. One will be in Ileton. In other words, you won't have to go all the way to Sacramento, Lodi, or the Bay Area to get good art, to see and support your local artists by simply coming out to our studios or to places that we've designated. For example, one of the places is the winery downtown.
Barsetti's.
Yeah, Barsetti's. Someone will be painting there, but several of us will be in our homes. So these, it's great to see our artwork and to see how we do it. This will be happening on September 16th and 17th, so I hope you will please save the date. We will be doing demonstrations and displaying our artwork for those two days from 10 to 5:00. I've brought catalogs and postcards with me to hand out. I'll leave them here so you can get them. There are also catalogs at the Galt Newspaper, and at the library, and at C Street Deli. Also, there will be a drawing. If anybody goes to all of the locations, all seven locations, over the two-day weekend, they'll be put into a little raffle, and you can get a piece of art or something. I mean, we'll be giving out something. I have a calendar that I'm going to be giving out with all my artwork in it, or a lot of it. This SAC Open Studio Tours, tour, is over a two-weekend period. Our weekend is on the second weekend, which is the 16th and 17th, just so you understand. And pictures of our artwork are in here, and this is mine, that was in the state fair, and I have cards also, if you run out of the catalogs.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
No, but we're glad to see some art.
There's a lot more in this area than you think, so you'll see it then.
It's good to see.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Judy. All right, so now we're moving up. Oh, no. Now we're going to do information and consent calendar. So Donna, would you please read that to us?
Minutes at the regular meeting of August 15, 2016. Receive and file warrants for the period ending August 22nd. Award of bid for the wastewater treatment plant annual road improvement project. Approval of the project and expenditure plan and transportation development app claim for fiscal year 2017, 2018. The treasures report for period ending July 2017. Award of contract amendment number two for consultant services for wastewater treatment plant optimization.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So do I.
Second?
Second.
Vice Mayor Cruz and Councilmember Hewer, call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Powers.
Aye. And now we're going to move G6 up under, well, we're going to do that next, so it's going to be the Approval of Wastewater Cost of Service Study and Continuation of Capacity Fee Study Session. Kurt, is everybody here that was going to...
Consultant, yeah, they're here.
Okay, all right.
Just in time.
Perfect time.
Sorry.
Mayor Powers and council members, this is a third in a series of discussions regarding proposed wastewater or sewer rate adjustments, as well as a second in a series of study sessions regarding the also potentially recommended capacity fees for our water, sewer, and storm drainage developer impact type fees. And so, without further ado, I'm going to introduce Habib Isaac with Raftellus Consultants, and have him sort of catch us up real quick. And we are going to recommend sort of two parts tonight. One is, if council has received enough information, is comfortable, we'd like you to actually, to adopt their preliminary study on wastewater rates, and that would then give us authorization to proceed with a Prop 218 process, which would include public outreach and notification to all of our customers of the proposed rates, and then we would continue a discussion on capacity fees.
All right. Thank you, Stephen. Madam Mayor, council members, staff, and the public of the City of Galt, back here once again. So we've done a couple of presentations. I'm going to bring you up to speed to refresh your memories of where we were last time, and then where we're going, and that's where some of the policy decisions for moving forward will occur. So wastewater cost service, we looked at your current financials. This is your expenses, and the one thing with wastewater is the items in purple, which are your expenses, that's your debt, and the dark purple is the new debt of SRF Law Number 2. That's your debt, and the dark purple is the new debt of SRF loan number two. We had a quite big discussion with that. Also, in terms of the trend line that's going across horizontally, that is your current revenue right now. Ideally, you want your revenues to be over those bars, so then you don't have an annual deficit in your utility because it should be self-sufficient and not rely on any other revenues. From there, we looked at, well, you've already secured that loan. It's already something that you've been using, and debt, I mean, the debt payment is going to be due. So, if you did absolutely nothing in terms of other revenue needs that you have, you should, at the minimum, include another component on the bill similar to SRF loan number one to pay the debt to SRF loan number two. And this is showing you where your revenues would be with that, and we're also mitigating the first couple of years with some revenues available from capacity fees to offset that initial cost because part of that expansion and the use of those funds are benefiting growth, so therefore, you could use some of those funds to offset it. It was a total of $3.6 million, $900,000 a year. Okay, so you have a little bit of surplus that allows you to go into the reserves and fund capital. And please note, this expense chart is only operating. It doesn't include any capital expenditures. So, what this allows us to do, it allows us to be able to slowly build up revenue in the wastewater utility through rates over multiple years, so then it could get to the point where you're going to cover these outer years in years six through 10. And here's the proposed financial plan. This is 5.5% revenue adjustments. The reason why you see revenues above the black line, the black line is your revenues at the proposed revenue adjustments, is that that is the additional revenue available from the capacity fees above rate revenue. So, you have rate revenue, then you have capacity revenue, then is going to be available to fund your capital expenses as well as your reserves.
That's the 3.6 million that was taken from connection fees way down.
Yes. Correct. Exactly. So, then that allows us to have measured revenue adjustments of 5.5%. Before we did that and before we made adjustments to your reserve policies in terms of rates, the revenue adjustments was 8% for year number one and then followed by 6%. So, based on discussions that we had from other workshops and direction from the council and from staff, we're able to make some adjustments to the reserve policies as well as use revenue offsets from capacity fees to get this down to 5.5 each year. From there, you now also have to remember that you have capital expenses. Your capital expenses hover around $1.6, $1.7 million annually. These are projects that are in the books, and there are probably even more that you could put on here, but this is what's been approved in your plan. And then, after you fund your operating and after you fund your capital expenses to hover around $1.7 million, then this is the resulting, any fund balances of your other reserves within your wastewater enterprise. And you'll see that the first couple of years, you have a little bit more over your reserve target, which is the trend line, and that's due to the $3.6 million that then you end up using over time, and you see some reductions and you go underneath your target. I view that that's okay because you'll notice that you're going to rebound, rebuild it back up. I'm also okay with that with wastewater more so than water because wastewater revenue is more predictable. Around 90% or more of all your revenues from wastewater is flat fixed monthly charges. Very common with most agencies, whereas water is very volatile based on usage. Wastewater is not, so that's why I'm not too concerned if you dip down below a little bit.
Excuse me?
Yes, go ahead.
On the, because this projects out over, you know, nine-year period, 10-year period. What is the, I know you said it was a conservative estimate, but what was the estimate for growth that was factored into this as well?
1%, I believe.
So, that's a very, very conservative number. In essence, what I'm getting at is this trend line could actually look better, assuming that growth exceeds the 1%.
Potentially, yes, but there's a balance where, yes, you may be in an environment that you're going to have substantial growth, but if we model that, then that means you must see that growth to cover your revenue requirements.
Correct.
And instead of relying on that, I'd rather see that actually happen on an annual basis. So, maybe your growth is 3%, which then means next year, that 5.5% revenue adjustment, you might only have to go up to 2%, and you could do that on an annual basis and see what that growth was.
So, people's bills could get lower?
The bills would then not increase to the extent that we're recommending. It would be even more modest. And then, please note, also, you'll see the rate civilization reserve is like a dark gray that is not in here because it's not being funded during this time period. That was one of the things that we changed on the last meeting of why this is able to get down to 5.5%. We basically, the best way to think about it is, why are we funding the rate civilization reserve when we're trying to mitigate rates? If we're going to mitigate rates, then let's use it and not fund it during that time period, and that's the environment that we're in right now. But we would strongly recommend over time, there should be a point in time that you decide to fund it again, so then you can use it again later on. So, then now, the proposed rates for, with the 5.5%, you'll see in monthly fixture charge for residential, we're at $63.15. That has come down from before. And then, with non-residential, their flat charge is $9.47. And then, the variable rates for non-residential, we break it up between low, medium, high, based on the strength concentrations of the affluent that goes to the treatment plant. So, if you're a low-strength customer, you pay a level less than a high-strength customer. So, it basically correlates directly to the demand placed on the system.
What we did is we put together a baker's dozen here of comparable non-residential rate examples. It's a lot of numbers here, but it really goes on to what's on the far-left side and what's on the far-right side. When you look on the far-left side, it's the customer type. Can't include their names here, but just some of the things that we have here is large industrial all the way through fast food and a few things in between there. And we took actual customers out there. We did a, we looked at three months, the last three months' data that we had, and we just averaged it for one month, and we said, "This is what their one-month average would change," with the, looking at the existing rates, existing charges, and then comparing them with the proposed charges. So, you're going to see a range where people are in the low customer class. That's a low impact to our system, to the wastewater system and everything. That's low organics, low TSS and stuff like that. And then, the higher, the higher demand systems that have more, like restaurants, you'll see the fast-food restaurants are on the high end because they have a lot of organic material that they dispose of, and that produces a lot more impact to us. And so, you'll see that it ranges anywhere from the 60% to the 120-plus percent change that they would see in their rates. So, we just wanted to give you, to show you what those changes would be. The grocery stores, I mean, some of that is pretty self-explanatory. The general commercial are basically your light units that just have insurance companies, stuff like that that are in it. Any questions on this one? I mean, it's just...
Are these monthly charges?
Yes, this will be a monthly charge.
And that's, so you picked actuals, then?
Actual companies. There's a company that is at $2,000 a month. Well, we'll take the school. The school is at, a particular school is at $74 a month that they pay, and it'll go up to 122, 123. But the large industrial, yeah, they're paying right now $2,000 a month for use, and then with the new rates going in, they would be up to $3,300, the new rates. So, these are actuals. Go ahead.
And SRF 2 is on the variable side on commercial?
Yeah, yeah. The SRF 1 and SRF 2 is on the variable side of this. So, the less they use, they're, you know, it's adjusted accordingly, you know? So, it's your impact to the wastewater treatment plant and to the wastewater system is based on their use, their daily use, their organic use. So, we've put the debt service onto that, so it goes up and down based on their flows.
And it wasn't higher than before?
No, it was just a flat fee for everybody before. So, it didn't matter if you were a large utility, a large industrial user like that. They were just paying their 11 bucks, same as the residential unit was just paying their 11 bucks. And so, that's how it was set up before. Now, it's not. Now, it's set up based on your use, your actual use, so.
So, maybe just as you're pondering these numbers, these are some significant percentage increases, but these are for our commercial, higher-strength, higher-volume users. One of the outcomes of this study was that, you know, part of, under Prop 218, we have to be proportional to our different customer classes, and when we did the water study, we found out that some of the existing metered rates, in essence, were not paying their fair share, and so, those had to be adjusted. Well, probably one of the key outcomes from this current study is that probably the commercial customers are not being equitably treated relative to their fair share, which then either gives you a shortfall in revenue unadjusted or puts that on the burden on the backs of residential users, which is not acceptable under Prop 218. So, while these are some larger number as far as increases, what we've tried to do is also give some equity between low-strength commercial customers and high-strength commercial customers and try to provide some equitability there. So, the high-strength, high-volume customers should pay more than the lower-strength, low-volume customers, and so, there's going to be a little bit of sticker shock, just like with the water rates when we did those a couple of years ago. There are winners and losers, and in this case, because we're trying to fund $26 million in upgrades, there are no winners in terms of going down, but there are those that are impacted less and those that are impacted more.
So, we're at the recommendation point. We've got the fee study in front of you. We've made the adjustments, and we're looking to adopt that study and to direct us to go forward with the proceeding with public notice and the rate adoption process, and any comments that you guys have, that you have right now for us, so.
Will staff be bringing back annually an analysis as to where we are with regard to the projections in terms of usage and revenue generation versus the costs in terms of basically updating what you have here?
I believe that we would do that at each budget period, so we would get those numbers projected for the next budget, you know, around in May and June of the budget year, and then that would determine right there what revenue we would need to meet that year and to see if, in March, March 1st, what increase we will need at that time. So, we would address this every year, and because of the capacity fees, the different growth rates that we may see or may not see, I intend on looking at it, you know, and that's what, you know, I mean, you can talk with Emily and such, but it's at that time during the budget period. What we're providing is, that's the maximum that we would, that we're requesting based on the assumptions that we have right now. And if we have more growth, if we have more use, we definitely don't need that much money, you know, so we can decrease our increases. But we would do that every June for the following year's March 1st increase.
And that would be in the form of a presentation to council, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. I don't know, does anybody else have any questions? I have a couple more things, but...
No, but I think Mr. Walters has something he wants to say, so...
Okay, well, let me, in last time...
Do you have something else you want to say?
Yeah, just a couple of quick items. The, before we open it up, and I've talked about this in the past, and I talked again to staff today about the reserves that we have. I mean, we have, you know, over $7 million in reserves, and I understand staff's position. 2.7 of that, I know, we can't use because it has to be held in reserve, bond covenants for the SRF 1 and 2 loans, but that still leaves $4.5 million. I think when we look at this on an annual basis, we should also consider and evaluate the appropriateness of those levels of reserves, and I, you know, I would just ask council to think about that, you know, not today, but, you know, when this comes back to us, I think it would be appropriate to maybe evaluate that because it does result in an increase in the rate. So, but I also understand there's a need to address issues in case there's an emergency or whatever, as well as ongoing capital. And then, lastly, with regard to the billing, the actual bills, and I talked to staff about this earlier today, it's my understanding we'll have the SRF 1 and 2 enumerated on the bills that go to the residents, and then the balance is the, oh, the component, there's a component charge, which is, or what was it, component charge, the $9?
Customer service charge, yeah.
Customer service charge. That's $9. It's charged to every account, and I understand that, and then, and this is all on the residential, and then the balance of that, the other half is the $27. Those two combined would be $37.24 or thereabouts. That would be the only thing that receives the adjustment because the, correct?
Correct. The SRF loan payments for the current loan and the new loan would be a fixed amount for their duration of payments, so the 5.5% overall increase would be applied to the customer service and the O&amp;M.
On the O&amp;M side. Okay, okay. I think if, I think if that's done, I think at least people will be able to see what they're paying for and have a better understanding on the billing process, so that's all I have right now.
Anyone else, council? Okay, Mr. Walters, did you have something you wanted to say?
Oh, go ahead.
I think he hit pretty much what I was going to talk about. So, if I'm understanding this, the O&amp;M charge is going to be the 5 and 5.5% on that, on the O&amp;M charge, the accumulation on it?
Would you like us to respond?
Would you please?
Sure.
So, we need a revenue increase of 5.5% a year to make, to play catch-up through year 10. That would be the total increase of 5.5%. Because we're not escalating the loan amounts, they'll just be what they are until they run out.
Right.
That the increase on the remainder would be more than 5.5% to net a 5.5% increase each year on residential.
Okay, thank you. And in addition to that, is the CPI going to come on top of that?
At this time, the 5.5% a year would be all that is proposed for five years if, at the end of the five years, we need to come back and reconsider, but there is no additional CPI on the wastewater rates.
So, you're going to do away with the CPI?
For the first five years, yes.
That's new to me. Thank you very much. Okay.
I think there was one other question. Did staff ever determine, and I don't know that we had a definitive answer, on whether people who wanted to prepay the SRF loans? And I don't know that council ever made a final statement on that, so.
Staff, do you have any new information on that?
I think what we reported last time, and I'll also look over at Emily if she wants to jump in here because her staff would get to do some of the work, but we do have the ability within our billing system to turn on or off the SRF payments for individual customers. That gives us the ability to calculate and accept a prepay. Obviously, that's a moving target in time. Each year, it'd be less to pay it off, and so, we could do that. We're recommending that if you direct us to do that, that we also institute a service charge. I believe we recommend a $50 fee, one-time fee, to calculate and put that on the billing system. It's in our prior staff report attached. I'm sorry, I didn't brush up on that.
I think that's correct.
You're coming back from vacation here, just to cover the hour or so of staff time to implement that calculation and put it into the billing system.
Well, do we need to formally approve or recognize that as an opportunity for the public to take advantage of if they so choose? Yes?
Yes, if you want to add an additional administrative fee, you would need to adopt that, and at the same time, you would say this is available to the public.
Could we have staff then bring back whatever is necessary to implement the Could we have staff then bring back whatever is necessary to implement the new admin fee and then establish whatever policy there is?
Yeah, we can do that. If that's your direction, we'll do that.
If that's, that's, if council agrees with that, okay.
And just, just to confirm, we did recommend a $50 fee with the prior staff report if you elect to direct that.
Okay, Mr. Guttridge, did you have something you wanted to say?
Mike Guttridge, General Park Company, and also the shopping center on Twin Cities Road. The first thing I'd like to understand is there's, you were talking about different rates for sewer, and how would that work in our shopping center when all the sewer and all the water go into one unit per se and it's divvied out through the system?
I think staff should respond to that.
Yeah, Mike, quick question. Do, are each of your businesses individually metered for water?
No.
So you have one master meter or a set of master meters?
Yes.
So that is an excellent question. What we would probably need to do is what we'd call a special study for his center to sort of do a composite usage analysis or estimate, because he's going to have low, medium, and even high out there with fast food. So that's a good question. We'd probably have to do some estimates of usage by a customer and then do a roll-up for the center. So it'd be very-
Do you think that's true of any of the other shopping centers?
Potentially, any, any, any area that has master meters or varied commercial uses is a potential for that. And there's no way to, you know, categorize, we wouldn't want to just say everybody's high, everybody's low. We would need to look at the composite uses. So that would actually take, take some study on individual case-by-case basis.
Okay, also, are we talking about the rates for what the subdivisions would be paying? Is this on right now or that coming up later?
We're going to bring that up after we get some guidance.
Okay, well, then I'll talk, I'll talk then. Thank you.
Okay, so do we, do you need a motion to do the staff recommendations for this part now?
Yes, in any direction regarding a payout, early payoff of the loan amounts.
So do you guys, do we have plans to communicate any of this to the small businesses beforehand before they get their huge bill?
So once you adopt the study, which gives us then rates which we can start the public education, there'll be a formal notice sent to every property owner and every customer of the city for, for the wastewater customers. And it'll, there's a draft, it needs a little bit of polishing, but there's a draft of that notice in the back that would be advising every single customer of the city of pending wastewater rate increases, their opportunity to receive additional information and/or protest those rate increases at a public hearing. You'd also, we'd be requesting that you set the date of the hearing for, what's the date of the hearing, November 9th?
7th.
November 7th, as part of us moving forward with that. And then we would begin customer education. We'd probably set up a couple of, we might reach out to the Chamber of Commerce, we might reach out. Probably the ones that are needing the most explaining will be the commercial rates. Well, am I low? Am I medium? Am I high? What's that going to look like for me? So that would be the plan, is during that 45-day notice period, that we would begin to conduct opportunities for public outreach as well as inviting customers to call and ask any questions they might have.
Thank you.
Yeah, as Mr. Winkler indicated, there's going to be the public outreach, but also in our notice, it's going to get, contact us, Public Works, so we can help calculate out what they, their fees would be. Because it will be a little different for them. And they won't know if they're high, low, or, or medium, you know, users. And, and we are willing to do that on a case-by-case with everybody coming in, because we have the data to do that, you know, that we can provide that information. The residential, which is the majority of everything out there, it's pretty simple. It's, it's straight across. But for the non-residential, we are, intend on helping them through this.
Okay, Sheri, you have a question?
Yeah, just real quick, since Mike brought it up. So are the, the mobile home parks? I know they're age restricted, so if you're adopting a senior rate, they probably get a lesser rate. But is there a way to look at the individual's use versus the park's use? Because, you know, like my mom's living on a fixed income there, and if her water bill went substantially, it'd be really difficult for her. And I know she uses very little water, it's just herself. So, yeah, sorry. So is there a way to separate them out now?
We, didn't we, you go ahead.
They automatically considered?
Yeah, and I'm going to look at marker hubbub. I candidly don't remember, are mobile home parks considered residential in the study? So they would get the residential rate times number of units would be how that'd be calculated. So the flat fees in the first table that you saw on the slide would, would be applicable to them as well. Now, we bill, we are currently, our process will be to bill the property owner, who would then either have to sub bill or through his lease agreements with his customers apply that.
But we're not doing senior rates?
At this time, we've recommended, with our last discussion-
We decided last, the last meeting that we weren't going to do.
Defer that pending the gathering.
Until we could get some more information on how to figure it out.
Because under 218, you can't have one class of customers selling another.
Correct.
Correct. We'd have to have further study on it.
Okay, so do we want to go with the staff recommendations? Does somebody want to make a motion on this part, or add anything or subtract anything, or?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
That would be for items 1 and 2.
To adopt the fee study report and to direct staff to proceed with public notice and rate adoption process. Do I hear a motion? Paige, do I hear a second?
Second.
Kurt, Paige and Kurt.
And also the proceed with public notice.
Okay, let me read item 1.
It's not on there.
Approve the comprehensive wastewater cost of service study prepared by Raftalus Financial Consultants and direct staff to proceed with the public notice and rate adoption process.
Didn't I just say that?
I was looking at the staff.
Didn't I just read that? Okay, just making sure. Okay, call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye. 5 to 0. Okay, part 2.
We want to also clarify if it's council's desire that we do proceed with bringing back a rate adoption $50 fee with the early payoff option?
Do you need a motion?
It's kind of implied. I just want to make sure that-
Do you want to add it? Do you want to?
Make the motion to have staff bring back a rate-
A $50?
A policy or to pay off so that individuals can pay off their payoff option with the fee.
Second.
$50, right, or something. Okay, Lori, Kurt, this is going to be one heck of an evening. Okay, call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye. Passes 5 to 0. We through with that part?
All right. So, thank you very much, and we'll proceed with that process. Certainly give council advance notice of what the final notice going out is. So if you get any calls or questions, you know what went out to the public, although since you're all our customers, you'll get your own notice. But we'll certainly keep you in the loop ahead of time. Now what we'd like to do is sort of continue with a continuation of study session regarding proposed capacity fees for water, wastewater, and stormwater. This typically would be applicable to new development.
Is this still all under what the one we're doing right now?
Correct. We'd sort of be looking at 3 and 4 of this agenda item.
So we've got four more big things to do. Just checking. Okay, go ahead.
Last time, we briefly talked about capacity fees, about the approaches that are taken. But basically, capacity fees are now the other side of the coin, where you look at your existing customers and your potential customers. So as you have growth, we talked about growth a lot, it could contribute to additional revenue coming in from the wastewater user charges. They also need to pay for the capital improvements being put into place because they benefit from those improvements as well. And we want to, when you, you take a payment from them, you pay their per rata share, the demand they place in the system at billing permit typically is when it's done. This first graphic shows where your existing capacity fees are versus other neighboring agencies. And then that red trend line is the average. So for water, see you're on the far left of every single graph, you're just over $2,000, and the average is around $67,000, just to give you an idea where, where you fall. Just on the surface, when I do a lot of capacity fee updates, just intuitively looking on the surface, your, your rates are very, very low, especially when capital improvements are very cost-intensive, that it was rather surprising where you are now.
I heard this.
Wastewater, you're a little bit higher, you're hovering around $8,000, a little over that. And then the average is around $13,000. Whoops. And then with storm drainage capacity fees, you're very low. This is done on a, typically on a per acre basis to development. So your per acre fee is right around $3,000, something dollars, somewhere around there, 3 to 4,000. The average is well over 10,000. And with the MPDES permitting requirements and other regulations coming down from the state, it's, it's a lot of cost, a lot of, a lot of improvements you have to do with very limited revenues. This is a slide that I showed you last time. So one thing we want to look at is, well, based on your current rates and the projections of growth that all the way to build out of your master plans, how much revenue would you generate if all that, if build out was completed as of today? So your capacity revenue based on your existing rates would be 18 million, 56 million, and 8 million, respectively, for water, wastewater, and storm drainage. Then if we look at the master plan, the capital improvement costs are in there, which have recently been updated, you're looking at water, $83 million of improvements related to expansion, to accommodate growth. So this doesn't, this, this does not include repair and replacement. This is just to accommodate future development. Okay? Wastewater, 81 million. Storm drainage, 93 million. Those are substantial numbers in relation to your capacity revenue. So in theory, your capacity fees and your capital improvement should be in line 1 to 1. But granted, keep in mind, master plans, you're projecting now till build out. It's, it could be decades from now. As you project farther and farther out, you need more and more contingencies. So some of these numbers, you know, as you get closer to your build out, will get more and more refined. And then also, it's very difficult to project growth when you're 10, 20, 30 years out. But at the same time, you still want to be able to recover costs now of development for their fair share of the improvements that are in place that you know you need to have. Okay? So the proposed utility capacity fees, we had buy-in method and incremental cost method. And then we're going to go over which methodology we recommend. And just to give you a brief summary, with the buy-in method, this basically goes off the premise that we're providing a certain level of service today, and we want to make sure, continue that level of service, and we're going to charge you for that same, to maintain that same level of service moving forward. So a lot of times, this is used when agency is almost at build out and all the facilities have been built. So now all you have left is buy-in. There's no more improvements to be constructed. Also, it could be used where growth projections through build out is difficult to forecast with precision. So then it's better to rely on your existing assets and your existing customer base to determine what is the current level of service being provided today, and then use that as a proxy to, to charge your future customers. Also, maybe the buy-in, using a buy-in is sufficient to cover all your capital expenses. So based on your, you know, for example, wastewater, you have quite a few improvements, expansions that you've done. Maybe, maybe when you look at those assets in your current customer base, that value per customer, or equity per customer is sufficient to continue to make further improvements, where you don't need to increase it more than that. Also, it provides a strong nexus based on the actual investment in the system. So sometimes as a policy decision, you might say, you know what, I don't want to go off projections. I want to go off what is in the ground today. I want to use our existing assets that we track. And we know our customer base. We know how many customers we have. We, we know that what the position of each customer is in relation to their, their financial position of the utility. And then lastly, some agencies, more so smaller agencies, they don't have a very comprehensive master plan. They just don't have enough money to do those big capital improvement projects or planning, planning projects. So they rely on their, their current assets. The way we do this, we look at your total value of the existing system. We actually bring it to today's dollars. And then we also still take into account the fact that the improvements have been in place and running. So we take into account depreciation. So basically, we're looking at your, the value of your system in today's dollars, less depreciation. And then we take that calculation, divide it over your current demand to come up with the cost per gallon or a cost per dwelling unit based on the number of gallons that they typically generate in demand. So then we basically could calculate that, what's the equity position of every, of your customer base today? Now, the incremental cost, that's basically tying it directly to your master plan, where we have your master plans, we know the cost, and then we have the projected build-out scenario of what's the amount of additional growth that's going to occur. And then we take the cost divided by that incremental growth to come up with a cost per, per EDU. And that goes, here's your total capital improvements, only divided over your incremental increase in capacity equals your cost per gallon. Thus, directly correlates, ties 1 to 1, growth pays for growth, and, and is based on the projections in your master plan. So the methodology that we're recommending is actually to use your existing assets. The reason being is more of where, where we ended up and what's the extent of the dollar amounts that we're looking at for, for making it palatable to development. There's also a balance where it could be cost prohibitive, where you implement a certain, certain amount of fees that then is going to mitigate development from even occurring. So there's that balance there that, okay, if you, just because you build, doesn't mean they necessarily will come. They may or may not, depending on what's the threshold of the, of the ability for them to absorb it. So when we're looking at this, we saw that the incremental cost method generated fees 2 to 3 times more than your existing fee. So we're going to, right now, you're hovering, you know, say altogether $12,000, roughly, 13, all the way up to $36, $37,000. That's a significant increase. So we looked at, well, where do you land if you just go off of your existing assets? Again, your existing assets reflects the current level of service that you're providing your customers today that you want to continue on in the future. So going off of the water capacity, your existing fee is 2780 for a 1-inch meter. We updated your calculation, the calculation based on buy-in approach using the replacement cost less depreciation. So your assets of your water utility, if it was built today and taking into account that it, they've been, been in place for the number of years they have been, and it reflects $53 million is the value of your utility. And then we allocate that over the equivalent meters of your, of your customers. We get this from the water rate study. You have 8,100 meter equivalents. And then we get a buy-in component of $6,598. So you'll see, just by doing the buy-in approach, you're, you're increasing your fee quite a bit, but it ties directly to the level of service you're providing today. Moving along to wastewater, we do the same approach. Your current existing fee is 8,700. We have the wastewater collection system value. We have the current capacity that it could, it could absorb, which is 3 gallons GPD, gallons per, million gallons per day. And then we come up with what's typical single-family demand, 250 gallons per day, gives you a buy-in component of 4,700. We take the treatment component, which is a separate, the separate assets of your treatment. We do the same thing, and we get 3,000 for a total fee of $7,946. So you'll, so what you'll see here is that this fee actually will go down a little bit. Again, we're going off of the existing, existing assets. And then the last one is storm drainage. This one was 3,324 per acre. That's what exists today. And updating the storm drainage system value- And updating the storm drainage system value, we're at 30 million. And then one thing that we did was, instead of using just the incremental amount of potential impervious acreage, we took all of the potential impervious acreage because, you know, there's most likely improvements today that exist that aren't just for current customers. There are probably storm, you know, there's curbs and gutters, things of that sort that are still available for new development to build and already have those improvements in place. So instead of looking at just incremental, we looked at total impervious area existing and incremental combined. And in doing that, the fee becomes $6,644. So essentially, we're being very, very conservative on that end. We're saying that the improvements that exist today are also, are going to benefit not just the future users, but also the existing users, so we're spreading it over everybody. You can look at it that way. So now we take your capacity fees and go back to those graphs of where you would fall in relation to your neighboring agencies. You'll see that your water capacity fee is still below the average. Your wastewater is well below the average and it's still actually decreasing compared to where it is today. And then your storm water went up a little bit, but it's far below what the average is for other agencies in the surrounding area. One other thing I wanted to do was look at your current fee versus proposed and what's the difference. So in one table, water is going up by 3,800, wastewater is going down by 761, and storm drainage is going up by $3,300. Again, this is, these are fees that are only to new development. And then lastly, I wanted to go back to what I did with your existing fee structure of how much revenue it generated versus your capital improvements. So you'll notice that even with the fees increasing quite a bit, water, it would generate 43 million versus what it shows in your master plan is 83 million. Which means if I, if I wanted to recover 83 million, I have to double the proposed fee to get up to that, that $83 million level. I don't, I don't want to do that right now, this is already enough to absorb. And then you're required, based on the statutes that govern capacity fees, to update this every five years. And you also have to make sure you have your accounting down and your revenue segregated from other funds related to capacity fees and how you're going to appropriate those. So there's annual procedures that you have to take into account, and then every five years you have to update this. So I would, I would just make sure you recalibrate it to see where you are in projections versus actuals, and if those growth projections and the capital improvements change over time. And then one thing you could do though is, we always recommend that you index these based on the E and R index, engineer's news record, the cost construction index. Because that's a better reflection of increasing, going up in your, in your construction cost. Yeah, yeah, one last thing. So wastewater, you'll see we used your existing assets, and look at wastewater, 81, 81. It's pretty much in line. The reason most likely for that is because you had recent expansions. And this is a good example where you're using your existing assets and what, based on the value per existing customer is sufficient to charge new customers for the, to accommodate the improvements they need or for absorbing their demand. So this is a good example of that. And in storm drainage, you know, it's going up quite a bit, like doubling, but still you're going at 16 million, you're at 8 million, now you're at 16 million, and the improvement necessary is 93 million. So it's also, part of this is not just doing all the numbers, calculating and saying, here you go, A divided by B is correct. But correct doesn't mean it's palatable. So this was the main reason why we stay with the buy-in approach, and it's a good way to show new development that you're just charging them what the current value of the system is in relation to your existing customer base. And with that, I'll turn to Mark for some other comments.
Yeah, I just want to add, when developers come in, we'll just show it as a road. They come in, they build a road out in front of their subdivision, you know, in front of their residences and stuff, and they still say, well, how come I got to pay a transportation fee? Well, that's because you're impacting things off-site, you're residential, you're impacting the highways, the collectors, the freeways, you're impacting other areas. It's the same thing with the water utilities here, with the liquid utilities. When you're looking at water, the developer does go in there and build the distribution system and the lines to each of the houses. But the city is responsible for providing the supply, providing the pumping to it, providing the distribution system to that subdivision. So even though the developer has built that infrastructure on their site, that's not where it ends. There's so much more. And when we value, when we do the $53 million value, that's not on future development, that's what we have right now that belongs to the city. So as a new developer comes in, they're building a little increment distribution system, but we've got all of this other stuff that we maintain and provide and provide supply and everything. And right now to supply about 15, or to supply Eastview when they come on, that's going to be about $12 million just to supply, for a water supply. That's treatment processes and other things. So you've got to look at trying to collect that money over time. The same with wastewater, same with storm drainage. Developers will say, I built a detention basin here. Well, there's other things that have to be improved into the downstream side of them that still has to, you know, has to help them out and others that are in the area. So that's part of our capital budget on that. So it's not just what they do on site, it's what also has to accommodate their impacts downstream, you know, and that's for, you know, wastewater also. So I just wanted to make that point out, that it's, developers spend a lot of money on their improvements, but that's not the only improvements that, that they are impacting. There's much farther beyond that, so. Anyway, so next slide. Here we go. Oh, man. We're just asking for some feedback. I was trying to end this real quick here, but, you know, talk, you know, taking questions and we'll respond the best we can, so.
Anybody? Everybody's eyes are kind of glazed over. Anybody have anything they want to ask or add or say or? Do you want to go first, Mr. Cuttridge?
Well, Mike stepping to the mic, just the reason we've broken this up, because it is a lot to absorb, and we don't, we're not trying to drag out the torture as much as make sure you have a chance to really think about the pieces that go into this.
Counsel, so let's talk about what developers do, okay? First of all, do you know how the sewer gets from Highway 99 or the northeast area to the line that runs to the sewer treatment plant? Anybody know?
It goes under Highway 99.
And where does it go from there?
Live Oak.
Live Oak, and who put it in?
I assume.
You're looking at the company that put it in, okay? So that's not, not true that developers don't do partly. Who put the drainage line in for the east area, by Point Cities Road and so on? The big drainage pipe that went underneath the freeway, 54 inch? We did.
Part of the commercial subdivision.
Pardon me?
Part of the commercial, part of your commercial subdivision.
Yeah, but what else went in with it? Who else went off of it?
Walmart.
And who else? And some other subdivisions, correct? So all I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, there's times that you, developers do other things besides just what's within the subdivision itself.
At the same time though, Mike, I know for a fact that for the surplus capacity that was installed on that, because obviously your development didn't need 54 inches for drainage, you were credited money.
Not, I don't disagree with that, but who put it? The big thing is, is who put it in? Who put the money up? Okay?
Developer is.
Yeah, the developer did, and that was Emerald Park Company.
Okay.
Okay?
So let's, let's talk about Emerald Park Company, Unit 22. Unit 22 has been paying, in fact, we only went back to 2005 on the 1988 northeast area fees. We went back to 2005, 2010, 2015, 2005, we paid. 2005, we paid $13,000 to the Melrose. 2010, we paid $11,000 to the Melrose. Now, that's, I'm not just saying, we're talking about 2005, 6, 7, 8, 9, we're paying. So from 2005 to 2015, we paid plus 100,000 plus. Now, I don't know what we paid from 2005 down to 1988, but for that piece of property that, that eight acres out there, there's a lot of money went towards the northeast area. And it says in the documentation, it's for sewer, water, and other facilities. What I'm trying to say is, I don't know why us as a company has to pay more. Now, we're looking at these figures up here, and I'm thinking those figures are going to be around, I figured, just was figuring it out, about $6,000 per lot.
Why is a company, why should we be paying $6,000 a lot? I think we paid, we paid over the, since 1980, a lot of money to the city, and I don't know why we should pay for our little subdivision additional money towards sewer water and drainage. By the way, the drainage is right there. You know who was the last person who cleaned out the drainage? We did. You know why we, why I know that? Because there was a beaver in there and we had to get a beaver guy down to get the beaver out of the ditch before we could clean it out.
I remember.
Remember that?
Yeah, I remember that.
And remember Pop, remember Pop, he got a, Judge Hinkie fined him and he had to, he couldn't leave the country for 90 days because of the beaver?
Something like that.
I'm just, I'm just trying to point out that you have, I don't know about all the developers, but I know what we've done, and we've done a lot. And I just don't think we should be charged anymore on that subdivision for fees, other than what we're paying right now.
I think your number's a little bit high. You have your final map out there, correct? Your final subdivision map?
Yeah, we got.
So you won't owe any more drainage fees because those are collected at the map stage? So you've already paid your drainage. So the only, the only thing you're going to see is a reduction in your sewer fee and then an increase in your water. And the water, you know, I can let staff talk about that, but, but, you know, we're going with these, you know, deep, deep wells now that cost substantially more than the wells that were, that were put in years ago.
I understand that. But also that land's been sitting there and we paid over 100 plus, it might be $200,000 for the land to sit there and watch the grass grow too. Kurt, you know, we've been around a couple of years.
Please.
I know. It might be helpful for counsel to provide some context, and Mike can take issue with my explanation. Those are Melrose fees for all of the internal improvements that were sold and then passed on to the property owners. So why is Emerald Park paying? Because they own property as well, so they have to pay their fair share of all of those existing streets, storm drains, water lines, wells that went in for the northeast area. So that's, that was to pay to build the internal stuff. Capacity fees go towards buying into the wastewater treatment plant, buying in that weren't put in as part of that. And some of the credits that they received on their fees were extending these lines, putting in these lift stations as the first developer in, and then they got credit back for the portions that were, I would think that Mike would want credit from future developers for their fair share. Well, how did we give him the credit? We charged the next developer that fee. So that's, it's sort of a pass down the line kind of situation when we get into reimbursements.
That's, that's fine, but we still put them, we, as a company, we're the ones that put the money up. I think everybody ought to understand that. We put the money up. The city did not put in any money up. They didn't put the drain, and they didn't put the sewer line in, they didn't put the drain line in, they didn't do any of that. We did it to get ours so we could go ahead, because they needed that sewer line, because we couldn't go on the east area, because remember, we were the first subdivision over there, and so we needed a sewer line going from down Live Oak.
The, and I remember that very clearly because I remember at the time, staff, public works, planning recommended against approving the subdivision because we did, we were planning for 1,200 acres, not a single subdivision. So it was incumbent upon you to put that line in based on a wild guess as to what the, what the capacity needs were for the rest of Live Oak, because there was no reason for you to put in one line to serve your subdivision, and you also were credited on that line as well. So I mean, but the benefit was, Mike, you got to build two years before everyone else out there. That was the benefit.
Well, fine, but we did the work though, didn't we?
Yes, you did.
Okay, thank you.
And you were reimbursed for those costs that were above, but.
Or for a portion of the cost, don't go, don't say it's all the cost.
It was a portion of the cost, but you had to pay your fair share. But the benefit was, you put in the improvements so that you could build.
Well, I understand that. I'm not disagreeing that part, that's the only way we were going to build.
Right.
Right? Same thing with the drain, the drain line that goes underneath the freeway. We couldn't put it in the shopping center, which sure benefits the city. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you. Okay, is there any, is there any feedback that anybody wants to provide or?
Well, I just have a question. As it relates to this, you know, and I understand that the two methodologies, you're just using the assets and whatever the asset value is, and you divide it by the number of single-family residents for purposes of a single family. But, but it doesn't, it doesn't address the issue of what the needs are, which is what the, the, well, you're looking at the incremental, the incremental cost and what was the other one?
Buy-in.
It's based on the capital improvement plan, correct?
The incremental cost would be solely on the planned capital improvements.
On the planned capital improvement. So we end up with a significant shortfall on what is actually needed in terms of revenue based on capital improvement plans. So how do we plan to address or what will we do when we've generated, you know, they showed that slide, 19 million and you need 93 million, for example, in storm drainage?
Well, there are a couple of things. As was pointed out earlier, we've used rather conservative growth figures. If growth accelerates, we get more money earlier, which can then sit in the reserves and earn interest. The other thing is, we've, as you, some of you on the council will recall, a couple of years ago, we did an update to our traffic fee, and we were able to lower those fees by instead of looking all the way to build out, which is probably 30, 40 years away, we said, let's look at a more reasonable horizon for planning purposes, and we chose a 20-year horizon. The way they've arrived at the numbers in the current recommendation through input of staff is that probably for water and sewer, knowing that we get to revisit this every five years, that why don't we look at a 10-year horizon so that we stay ahead of development with needed improvements and calculate those improvements we will need in the next 10 years rather than the next 50 years? We could have used a 20-year horizon and that would drive the fees significantly higher. So we're recommending that we adopt sort of a 10-year outlook fee, or we will be recommending that if we don't get direction to proceed differently, and that we'd revisit it in five years and every five years thereafter as is required by law.
Okay. Thank you.
Maybe one more piece of context on how that can work when you revisit it. So why is the wastewater going down and everything else is going up dramatically? Because we did an early projection of costs long before I arrived at the city, probably back pre-2010, when they were contemplating the first major upgrade to the plant. to the plant, and they looked at what those costs were likely to be, and costs came in well under that budget. Well, that's what the fees were set on. Well, coincidentally, we've since done another large upgrade, and those fees were set high enough at the time, that we're able to absorb that and still break even, and in fact, we're recommending it be lowered going forward, because we've pretty well funded the lion's share of foreseeable improvements. Now, if state comes along with a whole new set of regulations, in every five years, we'll take a fresh look at that.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you want to add something, Sharon?
I just wanted to speak for people that I talked to out when I was campaigning, and a lot of them are more accepting of growth. Everyone knows that we're going to grow, but the one thing they said over and over again is, new development has to pay for itself. And I'm not a math genius, but we just looked at eighty million dollars of forecasted need in ten years, and we're only going to collect twenty. So, that means in five years from now, when the economy cools off, and we're looking at sixty million that we haven't collected over this five years of rather hot market activity, where does that sixty million dollars come from then? And, you know, I just, I think it's too conservative. I think that we're in the bull's eye of new development, and we can afford to be a little bit more aggressive with making sure our needs are taken care of. I think GALT's been a sweet deal for many years for development, and the charts showed it. It showed that our fees are very low compared to other neighboring cities. Lodi isn't having a problem growing with its fees, which are, it looked, just from the graph, that they were somewhat like ten times higher than ours. So, I would just question whether the, the demand forecast is, is too timid, and whether we're really shortfalling our future, you know, and all this infrastructure is what makes a great community, and that's what people in this city want for their future. They're gonna live for the rest of their lives, and they don't want to see a shortfall of basic infrastructure five years from now. Five years is not a long time, and we're selling houses as fast as we can build them. So, I think the market shows that lot higher, a lot higher fees, very close to us, in Lodi Oak Grove, they're still selling houses at the same rate we are. So, I'm not quite understanding the continued gift to development, although, I love Mr. Gutridge as much as everyone does, and appreciate what he's done for our community, but that sentiment isn't a replacement for rational thinking. Thank you.
I'm looking at the capacity fee comparisons, and it looks like GALT's a lot higher, higher, higher than Lodi, and Elk Grove, and Folsom.
I know.
So.
And wastewater, we're higher, too.
Well, I think there's, there's, you know, how do you pick the GALT? If you go at least, you can't raise the fee so much that, then we stop for it, because there does need some stuff. You need, how, we need to have a, you know, a moderate amount of growth, and you can't set fees so high that it, it ends, because it just, all these fees get passed on to the new homeowners. And you can end up making homes in our area so expensive that people can't afford to buy them here. So, I, I actually think that I, I would accept the report, and that the capacity fee, looks like they're trying to be conservative. I like the methodology, I think it's easy to understand. I, I also believe that, that, you know, growth needs pay for itself, that, you know, new residents add something to our community also. And there's, you know, you just can't set fees to the point that we make our, we should be putting ourselves out of the market. You know, we're not hitting, by any means hitting the average, we're still below average, and I think that that's, I accept the capacity, the fees.
Okay, I do, too, so we'll do.
Motion.
Okay. So, then, since we did, you don't have to return with an updated report, right?
So, absent any direction to pick a different method than what is being recommended, or to look at a different horizon, right now, we've got a ten-year horizon based on assumed growth. If, if the economy heats up, that can be revisited, we don't have to wait five years. What we certainly wanted to make sure is that as, as Eastview and industrial annexations are occurring, that we've got a good ten-year outlook, knowing that we can right-size that, we have to look at it every five years, we can look at it sooner. But we also, if, if, if things slow down, then we don't need the new improvements any sooner. If things heat up, we collected more money than we anticipated. So, there's a little bit of self-correction.
So, we're, we're okay with it? We're okay?
If, if there's no further direction, we're gonna bring back this recommendation on September nineteenth.
Okay, can you bring, we just highlighted the, I mean, are you gonna do this whole thing over again?
No. We'll, we'll give you the highlight.
Could you do the condensed version, please?
I, I think that everybody needs, the, the current residents need to understand, these fees are for new residents, they aren't adding, they aren't adding for cost. You know, it's not like.
Good point.
Water rates, where we were concerned about charging the existing customers to pay for new customers. This isn't doing that. This is actually, it, construction pays for itself.
Okay. So, we're good? We're good, everybody? We're good? Okay, so, we're going to move on. We're gonna move on to the Community Development Department. The State of California Energy Commission's Small Government Leadership Challenge Grant Award.
Good evening. For a little bit of a change of pace, it's my pleasure to present to you the California Energy Commission's Small Government Leadership Challenge Grant Award.
Yay!
As you know, GALT has been awarded a grant by the Energy Commission for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars and some change. The Small Government Leadership Challenge Grant was available to small cities to design and complete their climate action plans, or CAPs. The CAP identifies specific strategies to reduce greenhouse gases, or GHG, emissions in the city. The CAP will help the city meet state requirements and the state's GHG reduction targets and goals, and the CAP will also help the city stay consistent with our own general plan. The representative for the local air district brought this grant opportunity to our attention, and they were really proactive in helping us seek ways to complete the, the application itself. They were sympathetic with staff, where we didn't have the time to actually devote to the application process itself. And they've been encouraging us to complete a grant, or a CAP, for quite some time. We didn't have the staff time to really devote to the application, so we partnered with Rainey Planning and Management to complete the application for us. They completed the application, pulling together the project scopes, as well as time and cost estimates. When filing for, when filing for the grant, we learned that not only were, was the CAP eligible for the grant funding, but we also learned that items that were inside a CAP could be eligible for the funding as well. Now, staff didn't put time to see what the CAP may look like, but we knew we had some master plans on the horizon that we were thinking about, and we didn't know if they would be in the CAP, but we knew that they would at least be consistent with the CAP, because they kind of achieved the same thing in the GHG reductions. So, those two master plans, one was the Transportation Corridor Master Plan for Carillion Boulevard. And I don't know if you remember that we've been getting some complaints about Carillion Boulevard speeding, impacted intersections where residents can't get out at peak times, specifically in the morning around school time. The bike lane is very narrow, and there's some blind spots. So, the master plan will address those issues and use a complete streets model, potentially, to really redesign Carillion Boulevard. And that could include reducing the number of lanes from four to two, doing an enhanced bike lane, and using roundabouts at the corners to really keep traffic moving. And that's the idea of GHG reduction. You're encouraging different modes of transportation, and increasing the bike lane, pedestrian traffic, and then, again, keeping traffic moving, so it's not idling. And then the other master plan we had been considering is for the GALT market and the Fair Site. Staff has been pondering how to get a better use for that site. The market is only operating two days a week, the rest of the time, it's sitting vacant. So, we would like to engage in a master plan process to really relook at how that whole site is used. Now, the market will continue, but we would like to try to see if we can get higher and better uses, not only on the site, but also on the surrounding properties, to really provide a focal point for the community, and really build something that, you know, all the citizens and, you know, we can get some economic development from. So, the grant is for the Climate Action Plan, the Carillion Boulevard Master Plan, and then the, the Market Site. So, all of these new plans will involve extensive, extensive community input, and estimate of completion schedule was included in the staff report. The Climate Action Plan and Carillion Boulevard Plan should be completed by the end of two thousand and eighteen. The master plan for the Market Site should take a little bit longer, because there is an RFP process, in that, the way the grant has worked, has worked, the benefit that Rainey got from actually completing the application on our behalf, is they will actually complete the Climate Action Plan, and they will work as an extension of staff, working the grant application, and basically doing the legwork associated with it, in addition to doing the environmental documents associated with the projects. OmniMeans will complete, they're the city's traffic consultant, will complete the Carillion Boulevard Master Plan, and we will go out on a competitive bid process for the Market Site Master Plan. Rainey Planning and Management went through a competitive bid process in two thousand and fifteen to actually become the city's planning consultant, and they have worked great with staff, not only from that time, but even previous, too. So, we're really happy that they've been helping us with this project. The grant was submitted on the last day of the submittal period, so we were really working hard to get these items in under the gun, and we were hopeful of receiving the grant, but we weren't real sure at the time. So, we were real excited when we finally got the notice that we were considered for funding. So, after that first notice, we had to jump through a little, the application had to go through some more processes with the Energy Commission, and now we're here at the contract stage, which is really the payoff, and it's kind of why we're here tonight. So, we are seeking council approval to execute the California Energy Commission contract. We're also seeking a budget appropriation to temporarily fund the projects. The grant is on a reimbursable basis, so we need funding allocated to the specific items. The funds will be reimbursed per the Energy Commission contract. Staff had anticipated some funding for the master plans, and allocated funding during the mid-year budget price, process. I think on page three of the staff report, it shows a little graph of what we had appropriated, and then what we are seeking. So, we have appropriated two hundred and sixty thousand dollars toward the Transportation Master Plan and the GALT Market Master Plan, and then we're seeking an additional three hundred and ninety thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars to appropriate toward the grant. And again, that's on a temporary basis that it will be reimbursed. The contract requires us to bill monthly, so as invoices come in from the contractors, we turn around on a monthly basis, and then bill the Energy Commission and receive that money back. So, there are, there are no funds slated to come from the city. You know, all of these plans are being funded directly through the Energy Commission grant. So, it's really a boon for the city, especially for, well, I mean, all of them, but we've been trying to get this Climate Action Plan completed for some time, so I'm kind of excited we can get this moving forward. So, the next steps for us are to actually have a kickoff meeting with the Energy Commission to get them started, and because we have the scopes of work, and cost estimates, and really a plan for the CAP and the Carillion Boulevard Plan, those will get started relatively soon. And again, we'll do that RFP process for the master plan, for the Market Site. So, the council action tonight will be to adopt a resolution, which will authorize the city manager to execute the contract, and also authorize the appropriation of the additional funding, also authorizing the city to get into a consultant services contract for the specific contract items with Rainey, and then also submit any other paperwork needed to secure the grant. So, that concludes staff presentation. Rod Stinson with Rainey Planning and Management is here to help answer any questions, as well as staff. And Rod did a great job on the application itself, and really wouldn't have it without his effort, so very thankful for that. And again, that concludes staff presentation.
Any questions, staff?
No, just great job.
Yeah. Thank you for bringing it up.
It's a little benefit to the city.
We appreciate it.
Thank you. I just have a question. So, the Carillion Corridor thing, we still entered into an agreement with Elliott Homes to help with some of that, correct?
We did. Elliott was conditioned on their map upgrade to provide some funding, but we didn't direct it toward the master plan. We directed it to long-term improvements on Carillion Boulevard. So, we have the flexibility of using those funds to help with any component. Now, it's not a, large enough to do actual physical improvements, but it certainly can help go toward them. So, this funding really will eliminate the need to use that conditioned item for the master plan, and we can use that money elsewhere, as long as it is for long-term improvements on Carillion Boulevard.
And Elliott's still.
Correct. It does not alleviate the need for them to meet the condition of that map.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Do I have a motion from?
Moved.
Second.
Move the staff report recommendations.
Mark seconded.
Okay, Kurt and Mark. I don't know if we wanted to read it all over again or not. Okay, call for the vote. Please.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Five to zero passes. All right, now we're to approve the California Emergency Management Agency Cost Share Grant Applications for Emergency Generators. To you, Steve.
Mayor and councilmembers, pleased to recommend the use, I'll find my notes here. This item is to recommend that we give authorization for the city manager to enter into a cost-share commitment for two grants that we're in pre-application phase on. That would be for replacement emergency generators for the police department and for City Hall. We've got two very old generators, that, one that is nearing functional obsolescence, and they both are threatened with inability to meet air quality requirements going forward for an extended outage. And obviously, we need the police department and nine-one-one center to be up and functioning, whether PG&E or S-MUD are, are providing the power to us or not. And a sort of a lesser-known fact is that the City Hall has all of our fiber optic connectivity and all of our internet connectivity, so it's great that we can keep PD up, but if they can't get any data through our servers to get to the internet, to get to, you know, our fiber optic network, they lose some of their functionality as well. So, that would sort of be a second priority for us. We have received preliminary eligibility to apply, but part of the final application is a required resolution authorizing a city official to commit to the twenty-five percent matching funds for each generator. If we were to receive, it'd be thirty-seven thousand, five hundred each for the, toward the installation cost. We do not know if we'll get one, or both, or none, but we don't, much as with the prior presentation, if you don't try, then you don't have anything. Right now, the matching fund would be looked to some flavor of general fund support, should we be awarded the grants. Yet to be determined specifically where that would come from, and we'd sort of work with the city manager and finance to figure that out. It could be taken from another CIP that's already within the general fund with council approval. And if we were to receive one or both of our applications as granted, then we'd have to come back with a formal recommendation on how to fund the matching share.
Okay, thank you. Questions, concerns? Donna, do you mind reading the resolution?
I'm sorry. Yeah, just a second. What is the cost of a generator?
We're estimating installed cost with all the automatic transfer switch upgrades, and, and wiring upgrades would have to go in with that, and permanent foundations and fuel tanks, about a hundred and fifty thousand apiece. We've sort of based that rough estimate off of what it's recently cost us, and both the Live Oak Lift Station and the Wastewater Treatment Plant have, both have new generators.
So, this has the potential to save us two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mark?
I had a quick question about the one at PD, because if I understand correctly, that's only about, what, ten, twelve years old? It went in when the building was first put in. I, I don't know, I'm just, I'm comparing the age of it to the age of the one here in this building. I mean, it lasted almost forever.
That sounds, it would have gone in with the original building, I'm pretty sure, because that was part of the original wiring. Mark?
Yeah, what we're looking at replacing that one for is because it doesn't meet the Sacramento Quality Air, Air Control. It never, the, the application was never submitted in, and, and we are, you know, they've told us we can only use it for a couple hours a year, basically.
Oh, geez.
Even testing it, we're, we're being harassed on that, so, so we need to give him something that he can use.
So, if we had a prolonged outage, we'd be in trouble.
Yeah.
Well, it would run.
It's not an issue that it doesn't function, it's just an issue it's not meeting.
Well, we can find for the air quality.
Now, Dave Organ is sitting in the audience, and he's sort of been our, our permit compliance person. He did share with me just. He did share with me just prior to my going on vacation that he believes that we could on challenge get more hours out of those and not receive a fine, but in any event, we've got a 10-year-old generator that only powers a portion of the building. We might want to look at, at an upgrade if for no other reason than that, but we do know they are pushing to go to the new tier three and beyond diesel requirements.
Thank you. Okay, do I have, everybody okay now?
Yep.
All right. Did you read it all, honey?
Adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to issue letters of commitment for up to $37,500 for each generator, two generators for a total commitment of $75,000, and local cost-sharing matching funds from the California Emergency Management Agency for replacement of backup electrical generators at City Hall and the police department.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Second. Okay, Cruz and Hewer, call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Passes five to zero. Okay, endorsement of the Consumas Sub Basin Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. Working Group Proposed Framework Agreement and Designation of City Representatives.
Mayor and council members, this is follow-up action related to your prior formation of a GSA, and we're now at the point where we need to work collaboratively on the basin plan, and Mark Clarkson will give you a brief presentation if we can get it to work.
We'll be brief, but you think the capacity fee was exciting. This is going to rivet you right now, but this is not even working.
Donna, are you able to advance slides for us from your end?
It won't go.
We're frozen.
Mine's working.
Well, I'll start.
Here we go.
Maybe, maybe.
Try it now.
No.
Oh. It's working online. I'd like a duck. Oh, it's, yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll continue on, you know, we can, we can do this.
You can do it.
We can do it.
On the cuff.
All right.
In fact, I'm going to grab my notes so I don't do it on the cuff too much and miss some things.
Okay.
We have it.
This committee, we have the Sigma, the working group that we have, it's been together for a little bit over a year. Once the state, the state came in and said we had to do some groundwater management.
There we go.
Thank you, Donna.
And they passed a whole bunch of bills, a whole bunch of requirements, unfunded mandates that are going to impact us big time. Right now, we're just trying to put, we're trying to coordinate how we're going to do this in our sub-basin, it's called the Consumas Sub Basin. We have seven entities there, and we have to, we have certain timelines to meet stuff. We developed our GSA, just, that's our groundwater sustainability agency that we just adopted back in, in June. We have a couple of other dates that we have to meet there as a group in our, in our basin, and we've got to meet this, or we have the, the state government will come in and do it for us, and at least that's what they've threatened us. So, the groundwater sustainability agencies that we have right now, there are seven in our area, from Amador County, Sack County, a few other agencies there. The checks there, we'll talk about them in a minute, but they're, they're already have approved the agreement that we're going to be talking about here, and, and two others we're going to, all three of us, including the city of Galt, and, and the other two will be looking at, at the agreement this week. So, we're getting there, but we'll talk about that. The, the sub-basin that we have goes up to the Consumas River and comes down to Dry Creek, basically, and out into Amador County, and those are the seven, seven entities that we have there. We have the Sigma Formation, this group that we're having, the working group, it's being facilitated by the Water Forum, it's a Sacramento County-funded agency, and they're kind of helping facilitate all the cats and dogs and horses and frogs and all the others that are in there. We have seven entities, but we have a lot more different ideas there than seven. So, but I mean, it's, it's a group that we've been together for a while and, and trying to agree on stuff. We also have a technical advisory committee that was just developed about three months ago, and, and each of them have members from the GSA. What Stephen, Mr. Winkler and I have been doing for the last year and a half or so, we've been acting as members on both of the Sigma Group and the technical advisory right now, but we're coming to a point that we'll talk about in, in a minute, that we think some additional people need to be a part of this. The working group goal, next six months, 12 months, is to form some type of jurisdictional formation of how all of this data is going to come together and how we're going to approve it, and, and who's going to finance it, and all the different things involved. We've got a hydrologist expert that Sacramento County is, that the, the Water Forum is putting under contract, and they may have them under contract right now, they were going to be doing it pretty quick, but Sacramento County and the Water Forum are basically paying for it, and this is about a half a million dollars that they're paying for out of their own pocket to get this thing going, because they realize there's so many different entities and collaborations that have to happen that, to meet the target, they, they, they fronted the money, and they are not expecting to get paid on it unless we get a grant, and that's, that's part in the future. Well, anyway, we talked about, or I just said the grant, the DWR grant application. We don't know the requirements on it yet, but they're going to be coming out, they said October 1st, and they're going to close it at the end of December. There's going to be a short time that you can apply for the grants, and we don't even know what the requirements are yet. But what we believe they are is that all of the GSAs in a sub-basin have to be getting along with each other and to kind of agree to, to move forward as one group. If we split off, we believe there won't be any grants available for that. And then we start compiling the data. The framework agreement that's before you should have had it at the top. These are the different items that are in the, that the framework agreement talks about, but the big thing is it's non-binding. If we decide we don't want to be a part of it, we don't like the direction it's going, we don't like the, you know, what's happening with the, with the proposed MOUs or JPAs, we can move out of it and move into our own, our own destiny and take that up. It's going to cost us a lot more money, but we can do that. But in the end, all of the GSAs, whether you're independent, whether we develop different GSPs, which is groundwater protection, you know, plan, whatever we do, they all have to meet the same requirements. They all have to, quote unquote, said from a guy a long time ago, get along, and that's going to be hard if we're in separate rooms doing it. It's all, it's, we're trying to get everybody in the same room and it's heading in the same direction. Two parts of this agreement that I want to pull out and talk about, one is the near-term collaboration structure. It just talks about striving for consensus, no fiscal decisions are here, or non-fiscal decisions require simple majority. These are just kind of the framework that we're looking at right now, but we want to have, or, and they also indicate two representatives from each GSA. And what I'm recommending here, that maybe city council can provide direction of who they want that to be, a city council member and/or the city manager, the police chief, no, kidding you, just seeing of your weight. And, and it's, you know, but, but we need somebody, you know, you know, it could be a combination of a council member or a city manager and the director, but, and that's for the, for the working group. The technical group, the technical support, looking at all the documents, how they're putting all the stuff together, how they're looking at the groundwater stuff, and it's just reviewing stuff and recommending stuff or proposing stuff to the working group that, that really is going to oversee the budgets and everything in the future. We're looking at, you know, you know, it talks about two representatives there, and I've seen at these meetings, there's been three and four and five, it just depends on who wants to be there, you know, to see whatever's going on.
Mark, you've been currently attending?
I've attended everything.
Just you?
No, Mr. Winkler's, we, we kind of went back and forth up until about six months ago, and then I've taken it over all of it, yeah, and I've got the scars to prove it.
Okay.
So, the, so the next steps are to develop some type of jurisdictional framework with this, trying to go forward and how we're going to do this, because a grant's going to require that. The grant's going to require us to have something more than just, hey, we're going to be Galt buddies and we're going to collaborate. They're going to want something more. But all we're going for right now is just this collaborative group. Then, then we have to work with the other GP, GSAs, and we have to start developing our groundwater sustainability plan that's going to take us out through 40 years or so. And we have to have that done, and, oops, I was trying to turn this thing off. So, I think I went too fast here. There you go. Well, that's the next steps, and then we got the recommendation. Really looking to endorse this framework agreement.
Okay.
So, we can check it off along with the others that are checking off, and we're hoping by the end of this week, all seven entities will have checked it off. We're also looking that, at council, you know, choice, if you want to appoint somebody to, to be at the working group and/or, and/or the technical advisory committee that we have, and meets about once a month. We are going to be meeting, the technical advisory committee's going to be meeting two times this month because we know, and two times in October only because we know the new rules are coming out for the, for the grant, and so we've got to be moving on that. But the working group, working group, a lot of the entities, because they're really small, they'll have a board member on it, plus they'll have a staff member, if they have staff. Sometimes it's just a buddy coming in to help them out, because they're pretty small, Clay Irrigation District, and some of them are pretty small. And, but, but that's where we usually see the, the board members. On the technical advisory committee, there are some board members on it too, you know, that, that show up all the time. And, but this is the first thing that this group has really put together, is this framework agreement, it's taken over a year, just to admit, just to agree to try to get along.
Okay, are there, let me just ask city council members, anybody, anybody have a burning desire to be on any of these advisory committees?
City manager on a dub.
Gene, do you have a burning desire to be on those?
I was going to recommend the public works director.
Public works? Public works sounds good, all right.
Who are you going to recommend, Steve?
I do as I'm directed.
You're going to recommend the city engineer?
So, it would just be you going to both of these meetings?
Yeah, and we've been doing that, but now we're getting just more of the policy arena as we start to work with these other entities and their elected representatives. We certainly wanted to offer council an opportunity, a couple of options, if you wanted to think council member, you're only going to get at the end of the day one vote, and so you could do a primary and an alternate, we've done that with some other committees, and if one person can't be there, we certainly want somebody who can vote for Galt. If you'd like that to stay at a staff level, you can appoint the city manager and the public works director as an alternate, or we could appoint us both. We are recommending that both Mark and I be appointed to the technical, and then at least one of us can cover most of the meetings.
Yeah, so, and then you'll just report back to us whatever you're doing anyway, right? So...
Yes, we have to come back to you to get any approval for anything.
Okay, so I guess we're all good with that direction?
And recommend appointing...
Mark and...
Well, Mr. Winkler?
The technical, Mark and Steve, and who's going to be on the working group?
Well, the report mentioned the city manager and...
And public works director.
Okay.
We'll be fine.
So, we designate, so you have voting?
Yeah, designate, city manager, public works director for the policy.
For the working group.
Working group. Policy, and then technical.
And then you two for the technical group.
Would be public works director and...
At any time where things get, get of particular policy interest, we can revisit those appointments, plus hopefully in a year we have a success or agreement, and you get another opportunity to look at governance.
Right. So, do we have, we're okay with this, we don't have to vote or anything? You guys, everybody's good? Okay, so we're going to move on to...
Do you want to vote?
Mayor?
That's what I said, do we need to vote?
I think we need to vote on that.
Okay, well, pick up a little faster, folks.
I'll make a motion to designate the city manager and city and...
Public Works.
Public Works Director, and...
The working?
The working group and the technical advisory group to be the public works and city engineer?
No, he's something, deputy.
Second.
Lori and Mark, call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye. Five to zero. Okay, and the subject now is the use of community development block grant.
Adopt a resolution.
Pardon me?
It was a resolution.
No, we just did that. That's what we just did. All right, so we're on the use of community development block grant, funding for parking lot construction, and authorization for an increased contingency amount and supplemental improvements under the C Street Central Galt Complete Streets Project.
Oh, boy.
Actually, Mayor, can we back up one second? We need to adopt the resolution with the sub-basin agreement.
I thought we did.
Oh.
No, we just did the working group and the technical advisory.
We did the appointments, we needed...
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to endorse...
Let me go ahead and read it out loud first.
Go ahead, Donna.
Okay, adopt a resolution endorsing the Consumas Sub Basin Working Group Proposed Framework Agreement to guide near-term working group deliberations and designating individuals to represent the City of Galt Groundwater Sustainability Agency and actively participate on the working group and technical advisory committee.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Hewer and Cruz, call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye. Pass five to zero. Okay, now on to number four. Steve, that's to you.
Mayor Powers and council members, we're actually pleased to be able to present a recommendation to spend more money because we think it's a project that is both of interest to council and the, certainly the downtown business members, and would be a benefit to the community as a whole. This item before you would authorize the use of CDBG funds that have previously been authorized for planning purposes, and we've received tentative approval to allow us, should you approve this item, to use some of those planning funds for an early start, first phase of a parking lot project down along the Forest Street corridor. The second part of our recommendation would be that you'd authorize the city manager to enter into an inter-agency contract that would formalize that, and then the third part would be that as part of doing that and two other improvements, I'll mention in a moment, that you'd increase our current contingency by $110,000, $110,203 to allow us to complete. The fourth item is the items that that money would help fund. It would take the, the remaining balance of about $50,000 in remaining contingency and up, up that ante by the 110 to allow us to do the parking lot, $71,000, 18 space first phase of a parking lot, and you can see the footprint of where that would go if you've driven down Forest Street under the current contract. We're able to get them to do the subgrade, we just don't have the money to put in the rock and pavement. And then the second item that we've identified, and we're hoping that the original contingency would cover, and, and it hasn't, would be to upgrade the, there's a number of planners on the east side of Forest Street, particularly down on the Brewster's End, and a couple further south, where the tree wells have been uplifted four inches plus. We've already removed grates that were trip hazards. We'd like to make this Complete Streets Project truly complete, and this additional funding would help us fix those under the current contract. And then also, we've identified an opportunity behind the new promenade wide walk to the north of C Street on the west side, would be to put a all-weather apron behind that, we're tentatively thinking decomposed granite, which would facilitate future events in the promenade area, perhaps parking food trucks off the street behind the sidewalk, and street fairs, other things like that, as we're kind of growing the downtown atmosphere, and we're recommending that this 110 would include funding to do that, and we believe all that would fit within our current lease agreement with UPRR, as long as we don't move events out beyond that. They did, they're already in approval of the promenade walk, and I think things that are adjacent to that would be acceptable on a case-by-case decision. So, with those four recommendations, we would be able to do a change in scope under our current contract. We think the prices that they've offered are very favorable and could get this done very quickly. If you approve this tonight, they've indicated they can go to work next week possibly, Mark, on the paving, and concrete work to follow. So, the trigger's pulled, and with your blessing, we can get this work done.
Okay, questions, council?
I think we're going to have some happy campers down there.
Yeah.
$4,000 a parking spot, though, wow.
Could this potentially, then, when events were held down there, maybe give us an area where we don't have to close down the streets?
Correct. We believe, you know, it might not work for all events, for instance.
All events, but it would save...
Armed... Farm to fork where they wanna use four blocks, but.
Like food truck events?
Food truck, extravaganza, things like that, it would give us a buffer area to work in and parking to help.
Yeah, it's really looking good down there.
Sure.
Every day, it's something good, so kudos, kudos to all of you guys for doing that, it's looking.
Kudos for staff for figuring this out. We were all really disappointed when we.
Yeah. Mark?
Quick question, Steve, because I've gotten two different sides of it and I usually go to the source. I've been told they were gonna hydroseed that area behind on the North and the C Street, but most recently I was told they're gonna just put in plants that were drought resistant, which?
So I'm gonna let Mark answer that question. Because I don't wanna, I have an understanding, but I wanna get it from the source.
North of C Street, where C and Fourth Street come together, that will be all hydroseeded. And we have irrigation on that side of the street, so we can reestablish what was there before.
Perfect.
And, but that will be up to the parks and Mr. Armando on how he's gonna do that. But we're gonna provide the seeding and stuff in the contract, so. So if it grows this tall and it dies out, you know.
So we're gonna try to restore the original footprint of Palm Park behind the new improvements.
Palm Park?
What, UP Park?
UP Park.
Pick a name.
Okay, anyone else? So Donna, you wanna, do we need to read this again or it's a biggie?
Okay. Adopt a resolution authorizing the use of CDBG funds in the amount of $71,000 to construct initial phase of the parking lot planned under the future Fourth Street Parking Lot Open Space Improvements Project. Two, authorizing the city manager to execute an inter-agency contract with Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency to include construction funding in the approved CDBG project scope. Three, authorizing a $110,203 increase to the C Street Central Galt Complete Streets Project contingency for supplemental project improvements. And four, authorizing a change in scope for the C Street Central Galt Complete Streets Project to include constructing an initial phase of the planned parking lot within the Fourth Street Open Space Corridor. The addition of an all-weather surface adjacent to the promenade, walkway north of C Street, and construction of existing tree wells along the east side of C Street.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And if I could, I see some frowns, we just caught a typo. It says east side of C Street, that should read east side of Fourth Street.
Oh, okay.
We would recommend that you authorize a change to the resolution.
Okay.
That would be in section four.
Okay, right at the bottom.
Section four at the end, it says C Street should read Fourth Street.
Okay, got it.
So I'm in my.
So moved. Second. Cruz and Hewer, call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Happy aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye, approve five to zero. Okay. Now, award of construction administration and inspection services contract for South Galt Safe Routes to School and Rehabilitation and Sacramento Area Council of Government, SECOG, Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvement Project.
So Mayor Powers?
Mayor Powers and council members, the Public Works Show tonight, I apologize. We'll be very brief. I'd like to introduce and invite Alejandra Sorato, Alejandra Sorato. She's one of our staff engineers and she's been working furiously on the next big project for Galt. Today, tonight, we're asking you to just kick off one small piece of the Construction Management Services Agreement. But we thought, since this is really your first look in a while, let her introduce the project as a whole because we're probably, we're out to bid as we speak and when we come back, we don't want any surprises.
Great.
And like Mr. Winkler said, we're currently out to bid for this project. Bids are due in a couple of weeks. We anticipate award of this project early October and construction would begin next March. And the project should be complete by the middle of July of 2018. So this project is a combination of four CIPs that were bundled into one. And it includes, what you see in this map is basically all of the different project locations and improvements.
Say, we opened any questions tonight? We're recommending just a ward, authorize city manager to execute a Construction Management Services Agreement. And then we'll be bringing back, that'll allow us to do a final constructability view while we're still out to bid. So if there's any addendums that come out of that, we can get that competitively bid and then we'll be bringing back bid award recommendations in a few months.
Oh, we're sorry you had to wait so long just to give that little two-second presentation. But you got a big scope on city government now and so, welcome.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments from the city?
So, do you anticipate closing the roads in front of Galt High School or any of that during school time?
So in the specs, we're not allowing work half an hour before school starts and then half an hour before school ends. And so definitely we, for safety of the construction workers as well as kids trying to get to school. Thank you.
Spoken like a true teacher.
Yes.
Checking that stick, making out for the kids. Any more questions, anyone? Okay, Donna, would you mind reading the, it's a long one?
Adopt a resolution, one, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Cozumine Civil Engineering in the amount of $296,649 for construction administration and inspection services for the Safe Routes to School and Rehabilitation and SECOG Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvement Project. Two, authorizing a 10% contract contingency in the amount of $29,664. Three, authorizing the city manager to execute contract amendments within the approved contingency amount. And four, authorizing consolidation of capital improvement projects numbered 51E, 55D, 57H, and 59I into a new combined capital improvement project number 5518C.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Cruz and Lamson, call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye, pass five to zero. Okay, down to the city clerks' report.
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Really? Okay, comments by staff, we'll start over here, Emily.
Thank you, Mayor, I don't have anything further to add this evening.
Chris? Okay, Steve?
We've had plenty, thank you.
Anyone down here? Okay, Chief?
Just wanted to let council know that we will be attending Deputy Robert French's funeral this Thursday at 11 o'clock. We will have our honor guard there and representation from the police department.
Thank you, represent Galt. Gene?
Geez.
Ashley? Kurt?
Nothing.
Moving right along, Paige?
Yeah, I had the pleasure of a couple ride-alongs this last month and I went with Officer Carter and on the night shift, and I tell you what, it's a little dead at night, but we stopped a few people that were reported as suspicious and he backed up Officer Kroger and I was just so impressed by how you treat our community members and just the respect you give them while you're searching them and talking to them and finding out why they're out and about. We assisted a couple that was walking with three children under five who still had probably another, it was 12:30 at night, they probably had another two hours to walk to make it home. So that was kind of nice to see them sort of the community like that. And Officer Carter really likes to drive through neighborhoods and look for your garage doors, so I kinda feel safe with him on the night shift. Then I also got to ride with Corporal Fisher and it was a very, very slow night, which is good for Galt. But I really appreciate his wisdom and helpful attitude. And the only thing I would, I really had concern is the state of our equipment that we probably need some funding on. When the car we were in, the siren and lights stopped working, so we had to go back and trade out all the things and get another car, so. But just kudos to the employees and the police department and how they just really reach out and take an interest in the community and it was really a great experience. I'd also like to donate $500 of my discretionary funds to CERT.
Okay, we'll put that on for.
With that on the agenda?
For next time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good girl. All right, Lori?
Nothing.
Mark?
Nothing, other than my condolences to the men and women of law enforcement. That was very sad. It actually angered me because I worked with the man instead of my wife, so it had a special pain. It brought back up pains from 2013, so. My heart goes out to his family and to his friends and the members of law enforcement, thank you.
Okay, so bear with me for a few minutes, I'm gonna try to make a kind of a little analogy. You know how when we go through our stages in life, we plan things and we plan things and when one door opens, another, when one door closes, another door opens? And I found myself lately caught in between two open doors, so. It's with deep regret that I'm gonna close my door to Galt. Next meeting, September 19th, will be my last meeting on the city council. And I'm going to be heading for Arizona at the end of September to retire. So I just wanted to let you all know that. I'll say some good words about all of you next week, but it's just, it's time, it's time. So I just wanted to let all of you know that and so I'm adjourning the meeting with that.